Good evening and welcome to our Glendale City Council meeting. If you would like to speak on any of the items that are on the agenda, please fill out a gold card and hand it to the police officer in the back of the room. The mayor will call your name and when it's your turn to speak, you can make your way to the podium. All speakers have three minutes. If you would like to talk about an item that's not on the agenda, please complete a blue speaker card and give that one to the officer in the back of the room. Items that are not on the agenda are heard at the end of the voting meeting. Glendale has seven city council members. Mayor Jerry Wires, Vice Mayor Lauren Tomachoff of the Choya District, Councilmember Diana Guzman of the Yucca District, Councilmember Leandro Baldinegro of the Acatillo District, Councilmember Bart Turner of the Barrell District, Councilmember Ray Malnar of the Suoro District, and Councilmember Lupe Conchas of the Cactus District. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages as well as the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
And good evening, welcome to Glendale City Council Meeting of February 25th, 2025. Meeting is called to order. Mr. Melner, are you on the phone?
I am.
Okay, so everybody is present and accounted for. We'll move on to prayer and invocation. Those two items on the agenda are the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance. In invocation is going to be delivered tonight by Sally Pless of Bahai of Glendale Local Spiritual Assembly. If you would come up, please. Gentlemen, actually everyone, if you'd please stand. Gentlemen, if you're wearing a hat, if it's appropriate, please remove it. If it's not, leave it on. The invocation will be delivered and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance immediately following with that.
O thou kind Lord, this gathering is turning to thee. These hearts are radiant with thy love. These minds and spirits are exhilarated by the message of thy glad tidings. Oh God, let this American democracy become glorious in spiritual degree, even as it has aspired to material degree, and render this just government victorious. Confirm this revered nation to raise the standard of one as a humanity, to promulgate the most great peace, to become thereby most glorious and praiseworthy among all the nations of the world. Oh God, this American nation is worthy thy favors and is deserving of thy mercy. Make it precious and near to thee, to thy bounty ambassador.
Okay, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, folks. Thank you, Sally. Next on your agenda is consideration of the minutes from the February 11th, 2025 voting meeting. Councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to those minutes? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve February 11th, 2025 voting meeting minutes?
Mayor, I move that the council approve the minutes of the February 11th, 2025 voting meeting.
Second.
You have a motion, Councilmember Conchas, second from the Vice Mayor to approve the minutes. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Here's your eyes have it, do have it, that motion carries. Boards, commissions, and other bodies approve recommended appointments to boards, commissions, and other bodies. We'll do just that. Mr. Melner, would you like to make those nominations, sir?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I move to make the following appointments. To the Historic Preservation Commission, Brian Joyce, to term ending January 31st, 2026. To the Industrial Development Authority, Manuel Yubara, to a term ending on January 31st, 2026. To the Municipal Property Corporation, Tonya Oliver, to a term ending on January 31st, 2026. And to the Personnel Board, Myra Uribi, to a term ending on January 31st, 2027.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Councilmember Melner, a second, Councilmember Turner to make the appointments. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Here's your eyes have it, do have it, that motion carries unanimous. If your name was called and you're present, because it works really well if you're present, please come forward to the podium for the administration of the oath of office. Just three? Okay. So if you face me, hold your right hand up, repeat after me, say, I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of my office to the best of my ability. So help me God. Give him a round of applause, folks. Okay, we'll now move on to the consent agenda, and that's items three through 26. Items on the consent agenda are routine in nature, or they've been previously studied by this council at a workshop session. Now, the items are intended to be acted upon in one motion by this council. Have we any speaker cards?
No, sir.
Okay, I don't have any on this. So if I can, I get a motion. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items three through 26? Anybody?
Oh, that must be me. Well, Mayor, I move we approve consent agenda items three through 26.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Turner, a second from Councilmember Guzman, no, from the Vice Mayor, to approve consent agenda items three through 26. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear him. Mr. Melner, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
There we go. Any opposed, say nay. Here's your eyes have it, do have it, that motion carries unanimous. Moving on to consent resolutions, items 27 through 31 by number and title. Ms. Barer, if you'll read all three of those, and before we vote, we do have one speaker card.
Item 27, Resolution Number R 25-15, a resolution that council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement for wired telecommunications service in the city of Glendale right-of-way with Flying Bull Internet LLC, doing business as Novos Fiber. Item 28, Resolution Number R 25-16, a resolution that council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation for the Glendale Avenue, 83rd Avenue to 45th Avenue Adaptive Signal Control in Maricopa County. Item 29, Resolution Number R 25-17, a resolution that council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation for the Bethany Home Road Loop 101, 47th Avenue Signal Detection in Maricopa County. Item 30, Resolution Number R 25-18, a resolution that council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of the Industrial Assessment Center's Implementation Grant Fund Agreement with Defense Works and the Department of Energy for HVAC Cooling Tower Grant Funding and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the grant award in the amount of $247,266. And item 31, Resolution Number R 25-19, a resolution that council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to enter into a ground lease with Vi Resorts LLC on city-owned real property located at 95th Avenue and Montbello Avenue. That concludes the consent resolutions.
Thank you. Rory, you wanted to speak on item 31? Just, I know you know it, just reminder, state your name, your district you live in, you have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Rory Gray, Acatillo District. First and foremost is the issue of transparency regarding item 31. Far too often, council items are added at the last minute or go straight from workshop discussions to being voted on just hours later. With the Viya deal, this has been a recurring issue, added to the agenda only a day before. I would like to see the city council work towards making it easier for residents to provide input, not harder. Another concern I have is public safety, which affects all of us in Glendale. This lease includes allocation of public safety resources to create a police and emergency response base next to the Viya Resort. Glendale residents deserve a greater opportunity to weigh in on this, and there should be clear transparency on why public safety resources are being directed to the resort rather than being allocated to other areas of our city, including my own neighborhood. Finally, I'm troubled by the decision to lease 19.7 acres of city land to the Viya Resort for free. As a Glendale taxpayer, it feels like we could be getting more for this land, resources that could be reinvested into public safety and other critical needs throughout the city. Now, as I go out and talk to many of our residents, this is an item people are concerned about, the transparency, and people are hoping that the Viya is successful, but they keep seeing these things and they're wondering, is this even going to happen? And then what happens if it fails and we've given away a lot of our resources? Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve consent resolutions 27 through 31.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Guzman, a second from who? From Vice Mayor to approve consent resolutions, item 27 through 31. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Here's your eyes have it, do have it, that motion carries. Okay, moving on to council comments and suggestions, Councilmember Baldinegro.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank everyone who came out to the Dog Days of Glendale event at Landmark Elementary this past Saturday. It was a really, really nice event. I think this is the 14th year. I believe the numbers that were given to me were, they exceeded the numbers of attendees as well as dogs for this year as opposed to last year. I think last year they estimated 1,200 people, so they exceeded that.
So sad.
It was a really nice event and we're looking forward to already planning for next year. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Conchas.
Mayor, I attended the Roseland Community Center and did a comprehensive tour on Friday, and it was just great to see the art that the students are doing. And I'm really excited that their service, their helping of 65 students with their after-school program, and they're also doing senior programming as well. I also wanted to let you all know that this morning I was able to tour Luke Air Force Base with Councilmember Guzman and also with Ryan Lee from our Intergovernmental Department, and it was great. I look forward to actually visiting a second time because we weren't able to finish the tour, but I appreciate the Luke Air Force Base and the contributions that they have in our community. And finally, on a personal note, point of personal privilege, I just want to thank my council assistant, Latoya, for all of her help and for putting me on a path for success. Tomorrow is her last day in my office and she will be going back to the Finance Department, and I'm really excited for what she will do in that area, but I'm very sad that she will be leaving my office. So if the newsletter is a little bare this week, it's because of that. Thank you.
Councilmember Guzman?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to announce that I'm going to be having my first Yucca District Council, not council, meeting at the System of Care Facility, and it will be on Thursday, March 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00. We're going to have the Fire Department there, the Community Risk Reduction, they're going to be doing a presentation, and also the Community Services in-house rehabilitation, they're going to be doing a presentation. So I'm looking forward to that, and I would like to invite all of the Yucca residents to come and attend.
Thank you. Councilmember Melner?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to, if I could, just kind of clarify a couple of details about the ground lease with the Viya Resort that we voted on this evening. I heard from a couple of residents earlier today about this exact thing. And so, first of all, the ground lease is for the retention basin behind the parking lot. It's maybe five acres. It's a small parcel of land that's right now being used as a retention basin for runoff. So it's not developable in its current state. What this is going to, Vi is going to fill it in so that it's developable landscape and basically unusable piece of property. They're going to use and construct a building that they're going to use to put their guests as they come onto the property through a security screening to keep the property safe. They're also going to provide 2,000 or maybe a little more than that square feet to our public safety personnel in exchange for the ground lease. We're not going to be stationing a police squad at Viya Resort. We have the entertainment squad at West Gate. They're going to have access to use this facility. They're going to have, there's going to be holding cells in there where they can put people when they make arrests. And it's going to be a place that our police department has access to, to use during heavy event days. We have a lot of event days out there, whether it's football, lots of other things, but it's not going to be a public safety station. It's going to be a place for our police department to use to work in the area. So we're not putting another squad of police officers out there. I think, did speak to our police officers about it, our police chief, who's, by the way, retiring, I probably all heard that. And this is something that they want and they feel that they need because of the amount of people that are expected to be on a daily basis out in that area. It really is providing a real, truly needed place for them to do their work and actually to hold people when they make arrests. So just wanted to clarify that so people understand. I know it's hard to read these things and understand exactly what's involved in it, so I just wanted to set the record straight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Adam, step up the microphone real quick. I'm going to put you on the spot. The only thing I would like to let people know of coming up, and I find this really cool. All of you probably know what we call a pretty frequent visitor here, and that's James Diver sitting in the front row. James is not a City of Glendale citizen. James lives in Phoenix and he spends a lot of time in Glendale. But James took it upon himself to do a cleanup day, and I was so impressed by that that actually some of my staff is joining him. And my understanding is several of the MIAC students are going to help him also, plus the people that he's recruited himself. And I just honestly, I think everybody should give this guy a round of applause. Somebody don't even live in the city. If you would, say the date, please.
Yes, Mayor, so on Saturday, I believe it's March 8th, March 8th at 9:00 a.m. at the Glendale Main Library, James has set up an adopted street cleanup. So our office is going to help, and if anyone wants to come and help out, we'll help James for that morning, get the whole area all cleaned up.
This is a guy that's not a citizen, but maybe after cleaning up our garbage, maybe he will become a citizen.
Honorary.
James, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, next is a citizen's comment. We make this available to citizens. It's not on our printed agenda. I have got Matt Gunch. Gunch, sir, if you would, you've got three minutes. Come on up and say your name. If you live, well, I see you live in Phoenix, just let us know what city you live in, and then you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah, my name's Matt Gunch, an interloper from Phoenix, but I'm a West Phoenix, or West Valley native. I used to ride my bicycle from 75th Avenue and Osborne to the old Glendale Airport. And I've been out at the current airport pretty much since it's been built. Lately, we've been having some shenanigans going on out there. Our south end of the airport is operated by a real estate company, and my tie-down went from $85 a month to $185 a month. No justification. There are still signs up on the hangars facing the ramp and facing Glen Harbor advertising tie-downs for $100 a month. It's false advertising. It's false advertising. I've been a tenant there with my airplane for five years. I worked on the mayor's airplane back when I was at Glendale Aviation. Another issue we have is recently a flight school came in from Mesa and evicted a large number of people from their tie-downs. My friend was one of them. We had specifically chosen a tie-down near the base of the tower so we would have access to the maintenance base. His airplane has now been moved to the middle of the ramp facing the runway, about as far away from the maintenance base as we can get. Everybody in that row was moved out so they could convenience a flight school. We pay for those spots. We picked those spots. The other thing that they did is they charged, all of a sudden started charging him $145 a month instead of the 40 because, quote, "his airplane wasn't airworthy." His airplane's a work in progress, like a lot of airplanes are, but he received no notification other than, oh, because your airplane's not airworthy, now you're paying this much. That's not, that's not fair to anybody. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Okay, there being no further business for the council, tonight I'd like to thank everyone for attending. Now, if there's no objection from the council, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Yeah. I didn't have a card for you, James, so I'll have to talk. There goes your honorary citizenship.